Appointed to counsel for very happy to have you here. Thank you, Christian. Welcome. For office.
I'm seeing will call now. Vice Chair Salmon. Councilmember daily.
Yeah.
Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Hesser.
Yeah.
Councilmember Whitney.
Okay.
Councilmember Parisi. Councilmember Will Clun. Councilmember Apolit.
Yeah.
Your product.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, just a quick uh announcements that we do have a pervert joining us this evening in the back. If you would like to listen. This is me in Spanish. Please use the headset provided in the back. And I think it only makes sense that I make that announcement Spanish, right? It's sounding perfect in my. But yeah. The I think this is a seat that was official that could be thing. And then most he goes official in this kind of. We will now move into our public comments. Does anyone have a public comment on a topic not on the agenda? Please note that the council may not discuss or take action on items out of the agenda. We have any public comments this evening.
If you would like to make a public comment, please bring a speaker stuff up to the court during this time. For those of you joining this meeting online, please just can hand raise feature on zoom. Each person will be granted two minutes to speak. We do have a speaker submitted. So when I call your name, you may talk to them for you. You'll have two minutes. I'd like to call Kent Mansky.
So ever infinity. I eagerly. And delighted to present to you an update about the Center for Creativity. As you've probably heard in the media, we opened in downtown Rapid City at the corner of. Main Street and Broadway. The Center for Creativity is a community focused art space that we've been working on for over a decade. We are proud to have opened this proof of concept space. After a huge community survey. And then a feasibility study. We felt the proof of concept space would be valuable to demonstrate to the community. And to our nonprofit arts organizations, how valuable. A gathering place for community in the spirit of creativity and innovation and public discourse would be. And our first weekend, we had over eight hundred people. Excuse me. In our first three weekends, we had over eight hundred people. And I can report to you that people. Are hungry. For community discourse. They're hungry for a way to express themselves. They're hungry for a way to tell their story. And we are just so delighted that we are on this path of providing them. Many of the council members know because I've presented this such a by council. At the North Rivers Community Council that I'm a member, I'm a. Resident of North Rose and happiness for over thirty years. Nothing would delight me more. Than to have our permanent. Forty to sixty thousand square foot. Center. Art center for the literary, visual. And performing arts located in North Worlds. So your continued interest, your participation in our activities would greatly get us towards that possibility of that too. Thank you.
Hmm. Last call for public comments. On Zoom. No public comment. Back to you, Jay.
Thank you. We will now move on to our first item business agenda. I agree. Uh. Okay, I get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening. So. Okay, move on to item four. You said we can't. Okay, I think. Want to agenda four. The presentation introduction of Office of Labor and Enforcement. Will be informing us about protecting the rights of all workers regardless of job or immigration status. Sorry, thank you. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. My name is Shane Perry-Rox and I'm the Labor Standards Manager for the new Office of Labor Standards Enforcement. And for my colleague.
My name is Carolina Babbage and I'm an attorney with the county attorney's office. Now, I've been assigned to work directly with the labor and with the Office of Labor Enforcement. And the standards enforcement.
Um, so we really appreciate this space on on your agenda and wanted to share a little bit with you and. About the office, which is newly launched as a as a. But. And we can go to the next one. So the the Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement, um, as I was saying, it's a new it's a new office. Uh, there's a partnership between the County Executive's Office, the County Attorney's Office, and the District Attorney's Office. And Carolina will talk a little bit more later about the different roles of of the different partners in the office. Um, but our overarching goal is to advance fair labor practices throughout San Mateo County. And so working towards the universal goals of San Mateo County where all workers are paid a fair wage. And treated respectfully and responsible employers are not undercut by competitors who are saving money by not following the law. So before we get into talking about the office, um, we thought it may be useful to share a little bit about why why we exist. Uh, why why we're here and what the Board of Supervisors was hoping to address when they created the office. Um, so we'll talk a little bit about wage theft and and why this was a was a concern for the board. And we'll talk about the approach and the the work we plan to do as as an office to confront this problem. And the phases of the project and resources for learning more. And and we're hoping at the end, we're happy to take any questions, but also we would invite you to that. Because like I said, it's a brand new office. Um, and we're, um, you know, we really want to figure out the best way to get the word out and also to be responsive to the need of the. Um, so why why O L C? The 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 thrust of the office is to confront wage theft. Um, and when we talk about wage theft, we talk about any failure to fully pay an employee for their work. Um, so that can look like minimum wage violations, either not paying someone the minimum wage that they're entitled to under. Our county minimum wage law, which applies in all the unincorporated areas, including here in North Far Oaks. Um, or not paying the the California minimum wage, um. Overtime violations when somebody is getting paid for all of their hours, but they're getting paid straight time and not the time and a half that they're entitled to after forty hours. Um. It can look like workers having to work off the clock, like workers being asked to pluck out and continue working. Or needing to travel from one worksite to the other, but not getting paid for that travel time. So working off the clock in that way. Um, it can look like deductions for tools, for equipment, um, for legally required safety gear that should be the responsibility of the employer. Um, or the failure to pay sick leave. So that's kind of what we're talking about when we when we talk about wage theft. Uh, just to go into it with a shared, uh, like shared vocabulary. Um, and it's and it's very common. Um. So when the the Board of Supervisors was looking at setting up the office, um, they considered research. That shows that low road employers steal up to four point six billion per year from California workers. Um, and about twelve percent of California workers experience wage theft, um, on average each year. Um, just in San Mateo County alone, the state labor commissioner maintains a database of unpaid wage theft judgments. And just in our county alone, just in the wage theft judgment, the wage theft. Um, cases that have gotten as far as the judgment, which obviously the majority do not. Um, there are over four million dollars just unpaid that that are out of workers' pocket. Um, so I think the harm to workers from wage theft is maybe a bit more obvious, right? Like workers lose. Um, a lot of money and low wage workers in this region in particular, in the San Francisco Bay Area region. Um, according to this study from Rutgers University, lose over four thousand dollars per year to wage theft. Uh, women, people of color and immigrants are the most disproportionately impacted by this. Um, but I think we, you know, when we're thinking about this from the county's perspective, we think it's also important to recognize that this harms employers too. Uh, because responsible employers who are trying to do the right things, who are trying to follow the law are undercut by competitors who are cutting corners. Uh, by by splitting borders. Um, and the current remedies, um, for wage theft are inadequate. And so I know Catalina could tell you a lot of stories. I also have been, um, an attorney focused on workers, right? Um, for a number of years about trying to help workers get justice through the California Labor Commissioner. Um, which is, you know, amazing that it exists, but it's extremely overwhelmed. So it's not uncommon to hear about workers waiting. Five years or more and for a resolution of their case, we need to be unable to collect. And and bringing a a case in court is possibly time consuming and not always accessible. Um, so that is why we're here and that is why we're creating O L C. And I'll pass it over to Catalina to talk a little bit about our our approach.
Thank you. Next slide. So as my colleagues say, uh, because of the problem that we are having here in not only in California, but in our county. Uh, the approach that our office uh offers is having a confidential labor. Advice line that will be operated by my step forward foundation, which is staffed with, uh. Multilingual attorneys with expertise in employment law. For workers, they would be advising and, you know, as soon as they receive the complaint in general, uh. Violations, they will also help them file the complaints directly with our office and with the D L S E office. And other government agencies that might be a resource for them or the employers, they will help with, um. Compliance and education and resources as well for the employers. Um, once the complaint, uh. Is filed, our office will start with an investigation and enforcement. We will investigate violations of San Mateo's minimum wage ordinance. And also we're partnering with about six cities in the county. And we will also be conducting investigations to enforce their minimum wages. If violations are confirmed, then we will work with employers to, um, get to a resolution and bring them. To compliance, uh, of the ordinance in the county. Uh, because we're not only an office that intends to be punishing, uh, employers. We're offering also, um, education and technical assistance. We'll be partnering with the CBOs to conduct outreach and, um, to. Provide information for employers that can help them understand their obligations and comply fully when their labor lost. Um. So as my colleagues say. Our office is, um, integrated by three different offices within the county. The County Executive's Office, the County Attorney's Office, and the District Attorney's Office. The function of the County Executive Office, which is where it came, is assigned. Um, it will be dedicated to conduct outreach and education and also will work on policy implementation. And which is part of the reason why we are here. We want to hear the needs of the community. So we can implement other, um, ordinances, we can propose other policies that can help. The employers and employees in the community. The office that I belong to, the County Attorney's Office, will be conducting the investigations, uh. We will work with the employers and negotiations and if we cannot reach a solution. We will file, um, several, uh, actions. To prosecute the violations. We're working also with the District Attorney's Office and they will be, uh, conducting investigations of general wage theft. Uh, major violations and. Labor trafficking and other criminal investigations and they will prosecute the cases if, uh, you know, prosecution is. Uh, appropriate. Next slide. I'm going to explain a little bit about the complaint process. Uh. It would start with the, um. Complaint, it could be anonymous or the employees can call the, uh, advice line. And a preliminary assessment will be conducted by the attorneys. Uh, from the organization, um, step forward. Once they determine whether this is a case that is within the jurisdiction of the O L C. They will forward the case to us and, uh, if there is a minimum wage violation. Um, we will start with the investigation. Prior to, um, to that, our office will conduct an internal assessment. To see if there is any, uh, criminal component that will bring the Office of the V A. Uh, into getting to know this case. If there is a criminal issue, well, then the district attorney will initiate with the investigation and then. Uh, they will, uh, prosecute if prosecution is warranted. If, um, the complaint is related to minimum wage violations exclusively. And it doesn't raise to the level to a criminal case. Then we will take the case, we will, uh, make the first contact with the employer. And we will engage and require, um, them. With the documentation that we need for the investigation, we might conduct interviews. We might go and visit the establishment establishment, um, of the employer. And. We will review the all the evidence in general. Um, if at that point. We will issue a notice. A warning notice of violation, the employer will have time to cure the violation. And also they will have time to work with us because as I say, our intention is not just to punish them. But, uh, more than anything, we want to bring them to compliance. We want them to pay, um, the restitution. The to the employees affected. And if there are, um, penalties due to the county, work with them. And we will do this in a number of ways, um. As I say, uh, we're open to working with employers. If they choose to ignore or warning notice of investigation, then we'll issue a notice of determination. Where we'll be a little bit, uh, more strict with compliance on that front. And. Again, they will have the opportunity once again to, uh, reach out and maybe work with us in a negotiation or settlement. Or if they don't agree with that determination, they can appeal that and they will go to a, uh, hearing officer. Or an administrative hearing. Once again, if they disagree with the determination of the officer, they can appeal the resolution, uh, in Superior Court. Hmm, and that's that's it. I'm going to interrupt.
Thank you so much, um.
We have like two more slides.
Oh, of course, right.
I'm so sorry. So, uh, I'll I'll be quick.
No, no, you can keep your time.
So just, uh, so I I kind of Catalina would think that's kind of a sense of, um, the process and and, you know, what we have available in this is. In this current phase and how we foresee it working. Um, but we wanted to talk just a little bit before we wrap it up about the project as a whole. Um, so, um, when the the Board of Supervisors approved the design for O L C. They were focused on a phase implementation because our 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 goal is to make sure that. We're scaling sustainably and that we're learning at every step of the way. Um, so we're we're in phase one now, um, with developing the program and building up the the infrastructure. Um, and we're we're focused on proactive outreach to three key industries that were identified as having high violations. Agriculture, constructions and restaurants. Uh, with that said, the legal advice line, like Catalina said, is open to any worker or any employer in San Mateo County that has questions about their. Their rights or resources, uh, but that's where we're we're to be proactive with our outreach. Um, as far as enforcement, we're focused on local minimum wage enforcement in the unincorporated areas of the county where. Um, the San Mateo County minimum wage applies as well as in the six cities that are contracting with us for enforcement. But of course, if we learn about overtime violations, if we learn about meal and rest period violations, we'll do our best to make sure the worker can get justice, whether it's, um, through through us or or elsewhere. Um, and, um, you know, we're hoping to understand our scale, capacity and resource needs and and cultivate partnerships. To look towards, um, a a next phase of the project where we would be able to, um, potentially expand target industries and our reach efforts and explore a broader enforcement scope. That might address the wider range of of which. We go to the next slide. Uh, so we wanted to leave with some resources that folks want to, uh, learn more about some of the things that we have shared, uh, about our office. We, uh, newly have a website, S N speak of dot org slash O L S E. Uh, information about the San Mateo County minimum wage, um. Is also available on our website, including this notice that employers can print out to post, uh, in their businesses to. Uh, comply with their obligations under the law. And and the the minimum wage ordinance is in the process of of amendment thanks to, um, Catalina's leadership. So we will be posting some updates on that website, uh, in in the coming months. Uh, with some information on the amendments. Uh, and then, you know, we talked about the broader range of wage stuff, so, um, also wanted to just leave a. A link to a really useful, I think, you that the California Department of Labor Standards Enforcement, the Labor Commissioner maintains. And that is now actually it for our presentation. Thank you for your patience. And. This is our contact information if you'd like to reach out and, um, I'll be around after the meeting as well. Uh, but welcome any questions now and ultimately comments, any feedback or thoughts on. Uh, you know, as we're in this initial phase, trying to get the word out about the office, like where our efforts would be best, um, invested from your perspective. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Um, are there any questions from council members? Blair, wait, please.
And, um, I I found on the website for the Department of Industrial Relations. State of California. And they they do like labor law and enforcement and Cal OSHA and workers' comp and. Are they prosecuting and going after this stuff too? And the reason we created this at the county level is that. There's too much for them to handle or they're not focused on the same things we care about or what's the differentiation?
Yes, yes to all, in fact. Um, so yes, the the California, the Labor Commissioners Office, which is the. Division of the Department of Industrial Relations, they do enforce the labor code. So they enforce the state minimum wage, they enforce overtime. And they're overwhelmed. And that's that's the organization I was saying, you know, it's it's very common for workers to wait five years for a resolution. Um, and I think in response to that, um, they have actually been seeking out, um, counties to work on enforcement of these issues. And in twenty twenty-two, um, the California Legislature passed a law authorizing county attorney's offices and district attorney's offices. To enforce the state labor code, uh, to try to bring more resources to this enforcement because of that. But also what you said about is their focus a little bit different is also true. Um, they can enforce local minimum wages, but they're not as focused on it, um, as as we would be.
Okay, and, uh, follow anecdotally. I I think we also have stuff with, uh. Like nannies and old pairs where, uh, people that are fairly well off. Hire someone that and they put together a package of housing and you're going to be like the nurse and the.
Yeah.
Person that takes him to school. And. I'm not sure if there's actually like labor code that allows for that because the the they end up not paying them minimum wage or.
Yeah.
And. Sometimes people are weird. They're like, well, I'll be deported if you, you know, complain. Um, and we're talking about, you know, wealthy liberal people in this area that actually do this and take advantage of people. Um, I did. It happens. I I know how it ends well.
And this is precisely why, uh, we're working, uh, with three offices. The D A will be involved if there is a case of traffic of, uh, you know, uh. Victims of, uh, labor trafficking. And if, uh, they issue to somebody to that level, we will be enforcing all the violations through the, uh, civil. Uh, to to a civil procedure. Now that we, uh, recently been empowered as a public prosecutors to do that. We will go after this type of of people, but we're starting at a minimum wage violations and. The investigation that we run will tell us if there are additional things that we we are going to have to prosecute.
Any other council members? Uh, Christian.
Yeah, uh, thank you for your presentation. I did have, um, another question in regards to your outreach efforts. Um. What does it look like? Like besides coming here to the North Rose Community Council, are you also sharing these, uh? Literature and all your support with, uh, the San Mateo County Chamber of Commerce or the San Mateo County Center Central Labor Council? Um, and also to touch kind of on this point, maybe the domestic, the National Domestic Workers Alliance? Uh, or other immigration advocacy groups because. At that point about nannies or domestic workers, it hits close to home with my mom was a domestic worker and. Anecdotally, there are a lot of cases where they are not being paid, um, minimum wage.
Yeah, thank you so much. So two of the organizations you mentioned, the Chamber of Commerce and the Labor Council, we have reached out to proactively already. We haven't reached out to N D W A because of the initial industries for outreach being agriculture, construction. And and restaurants, but I think, uh, we've both worked on plenty of domestic worker cases and, you know, have. Are are pretty concerned about that industry too. So I think. It's an industry we want to do more proactive outreach in in the future, but also want to get those calls now are open to receiving the calls. Um, and and also I I would like to see notes when you were talking because I was like, oh, you would let me make sure writing those organizations down. If you have other organizations we think we should be connecting with where, um, we would really appreciate that input too. Um, because at this really initial stage, we're hoping to do as much outreach as we can through organizations, but already developed relationship, um, working people in the industry that we're trying to target.
Yeah, you mentioned, excuse me, you mentioned anonymity of a claimant at one point. Um, can that follow? Can that anonymity follow through this entire process? In other words. Restaurants paying its workers something below minimum wage, the original person who. Files the claim can hopefully remain anonymous through the entire process. And my concern is retribution of the employer and things like that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, are in the minimum wage ordinance, um, and just like in terms of our our. Values and our interests, the minimum wage ordinance does call for us to maintain that information confidential to the greatest extent possible. Sometimes there will be situations, um, where it's not possible, like you have a restaurant with only two cooks or something like that. Um, but I think we, um, you know, we feel that, um, to the extent possible, we'll maintain that confidentiality. Um, and also that if we're in a situation where we we can't move forward without, um, potentially exposing someone. Um, we will have a conversation with that person so that they can decide is it worth it to be to go ahead and there may be people who decide, no, like, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. And there may be people who decide, no, like, I just wanted to bring your attention, but I'm gonna have to put my name out there. It's not worth it. The ordinance and California law, um, and the local minimum wage law does contain anti-retaliation protections, and we take that really seriously. Um, at the same time, like, because there's a law against it, doesn't mean it doesn't happen, of course. Um, otherwise, we probably wouldn't be here. Um, so um, you know, we we understand that that's a complicated decision and that people need to be able to weigh the risks.
Thank you very much. Any other council members?
Christian, uh, that comment about such a small restaurant, a family restaurant, did kind of bring up something for me. Like employers who might not have like a legal or H R department. Uh, how do we ensure that the advice and resources provided through the hotline are comprehensive and easy for them to understand?
The line, uh, it's gonna be staffed by attorneys that have a lot of experience in employment law. So uh, this was one of the concerns that we have and the reason why we're partnering with this organization, because they've been doing this in the Bay Area for many years. Uh, the managing, the managing attorney is a very well-known attorney in the area, and we are confident that they will be able to provide uh, with the information in a very clear and simple way for uh, not so sophisticated uh, employers that uh, will require this advice.
The only thing I'm gonna add to that is that also, um, I think as Catalina was explaining in the um, and how we see the the process, um, like, once we initiate an investigation, once we make initial findings, there will be a conversation with the employer. Like, there will be many opportunities to, you know, settle a case, to reach a resolution. Um, so I think we, you know, we're, we we understand that some employers have better access to information than others. And, you know, we'll take that into account. That's where, that's where opportunity.
Thank you. Any other comments? I do have a lot of comments. I know that in San Mateo County, as you stated up there, we do have our minimum, our county minimum wage, right? Which is different from the state and the federal. When it comes to sick leave, is there also, is that a a state mandate or is that county as well?
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, at this point, it's state mandate, and we are um, contemplating the idea of perhaps bringing uh, an ordinance that will enforce sick leave here in the county at the local level. But at this point, it's uh, state law.
Okay. And in the the state law says how many days per calendar year for sick?
Oh, I believe is one hour for a, for every thirty hours work.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Are there any other comments or questions from council? Are there any public comments? Regardless?
If you'd like to comment on agenda item number four, you can say anything, if you're ready to film or you can skip yourself up. No.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep, here's. Okay, we will now move on to agenda item five, which is the presentation. Uh, this is the update on Middlefield Road Improvement Project, uh, the competition status by the Department of Public Works. So I have asked county staff, um, if we could get uh, an update to the council, because we obviously have seen the um, yeah, we we've seen the the improvements, so I was like, hey, you know, maybe it's time for us to get, you know, get a uh, uh, a, an update of what's going on. So thank you so much for presenting tonight.
Thank you.
Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Monica Ravenna. I'm Senior Civil Engineer with the Department of Public Works. And I have been involved with this project for a long time, and project uh, engineer for the Middlefield Road Improvement Project, and I was involved with the design and all through construction. So I'm here to provide an update and also give a brief on what's going on and uh, remaining for future. And I have a senior supervisor.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Carter Choy. I'm your principal, so.
Thanks.
Um, so just a brief uh, overview of the project. Um, so the Middlefield Road project has three key components. There's a roadway improvement, uh, which is from Pacific Avenue all the way to Fifth Avenue. Then there's the utility undergrounding, which is from MacArthur Avenue to Fifth Avenue. And then the sanitary sewer replacement, which goes from Douglas Avenue to Sixth Avenue. Slightly. So uh, there are several elements in this project. So this project involves um, new lane configuration for Middlefield Road. Middlefield Road went from four lanes, that is two lane each direction, to three lanes. One lane in each direction and one um, central to the left turn lane. The project also involves widening sidewalks from five feet to twelve feet. We have uh, taken into street lights and pedestrian lights, offered bike lanes, high visibility crosswalk at several locations, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, the R R Vs, these traffic signals, trees, uh, bike rack, benches, trash receptacles, there's also public Wi-Fi and smart features like the solar benches with the U S B chargers. There is um, first green infrastructure throughout the corridor, um, and also undergrounding the overhead utilities. Uh, as you probably aware and experienced, this project uh, was, the construction was several phases. There are ten phases to this, for this uh, project, and all of them have been completed right now, and the roadway is uh, fully open for traffic. Um, some construction updates. So as I mentioned earlier, the um, surveys improvement is completed. We have the uh, North Pharaoh's uh, green infrastructure, which is also completed. The cleaning driveway, um, relocation is partially completed. The final stage will be done once U P R R comes in and removes and uh, upgrades their signal. Then we also um, installed time-limited parking zone recently, and we have the uh, red, we offset the rectangular rapid flashing beacons for better visibility at Dumbarton and for them. Uh, so here are some uh, photos of the G I at the health clinic. Uh, this was taken around the time that we installed the G Is, and there are some, some plans. Um, hopefully, we got thriving now. Um, and at the third um, photo, there's the, the driveway portion which is blocked off. Uh, we are waiting for U P R R to finish their work, and once that's done, we can take out the barricade and that will be open for traffic. Next slide. Uh, recently, we also um, installed a twenty-minute uh, limited parking zone. So as part of this project, uh, we install uh, bus pads based on the, based on the standards of uh, Sam Trans. Because of the latest standards, the bus zone had to be longer than what it existed. And this meant that um, we had to have more uh, no parking zones. But based on the uh, discussions with the business owners and their feedback, um, it looked like they wanted some short-term parking um, right in front of their businesses. So we went to the board and um, got a twenty-minute limited parking zones, and we also recently installed a sign, so there are two spaces at Dumbarton and one uh, between both of them. Like. Uh, it was also brought to our attention that uh, the R R Vs that were installed at a couple of locations were not visible because they were set further away from the road. Uh, this was probably done because of the conflicts there. So we reached out to the vendors um, to see what can be done to improve the visibility. And we came up with a solution to have a cantilever bracket and mount the sign and the flashing beacon on the bracket. So the bracket is offset from the pole, and that way it's more towards the roadway. It can improve the visibility of the sign and the uh, flashing beacon. So this is at Dumbarton and. Um, it's like. Uh, moving on to ongoing work. So the next major phase of this project is the utility underground, undergrounding. So start beginning of this uh, year, P G N D has been working to underground their lines. Uh, they are majority of the, they have installed majority of the cables through through the underground conduits. Um, and those cable have been turned off, so the blue street light and pedestrian lights are active. And then there's a couple of issues that are still remaining to be resolved. One of them involves a license agreement with Sam Trans for uh, underground cable crossing at the Redwood Junction. And the other issue is um, overhead power to the dental clinic at thirty forty Middlefield. We still have to maintain that because they're not yet set for undergrounding. And we are anticipating all this issues to be resolved within two to three months, and that P G N D will finish their work and um, they will um, they already started, removed um, their portion from the utility pole. So once they come back, they've finished, they'll be done with it. Uh, next slide, please. So this is how it looks with P G N D's portion removed from the top of the pole. So they are gone, um, and then the the only remaining cables are the utilities. So next slide. So speaking of other utilities, um, we are in touch, we are in contact with them for them, for uh, these utilities to get started and start undergrounding their facilities. So unfortunately, it is a sequential thing, so each utility will go one after another. So Comcast, Verizon, and then finally it will be A T and T. They'll be the ones to remove the pole and then uh, do any minor concrete side over repair work that needs to be done. Um, so this process, as it was shown in the previous slide, the whole process is about eighteen to twenty-four months, but P G N D is is almost done, so we are anticipating the rest of the work to be done within eighteen months. Uh, and then other remaining future work is mostly focused around the health clinic. Um, so there is the um, health clinic Redwood Junction traffic signal. So as part of this project, we have installed traffic signal at intersection of Pacific, the drive, uh, the health clinic driveway and hurling lane. So that whole signal, uh, because it's close to the railroad, it has to uh, connect with the railroad signal. They they are, they have to be interconnected and our signal cannot go live until railroad upgrades their signal. So we are waiting for them to upgrade their signals. We are dependent on U P R R's timeline for this. Uh, they have already installed some signal foundation. Uh, there's a couple of foundation that's remaining to uh, to be installed. Uh, they, we are working with, uh, there's some utility conflicts there, so we're working with utility uh, companies to resolve the conflict. Um, and once that's done, then we can, then we can um, switch on our signals and that work will be done. So. Once the U, once U P R R signal work is done, we can then move on to the uh, Redwood Junction driveway relocation. This work basically involves shifting the driveways for the south from the railroad tracks. Um, and then currently, we can't do this because there's a U P R R signal right in the middle of our feature driving. So once we remove that, we can get going. So. And finally, uh, paving and railroad track replacement at the railroad crossing on Middlefield Road. This again involves U P R R. So they also want to replace the railroad tracks on Middlefield Road and the pavement underneath the railroad tracks. Currently, we pave, we have paved up to the tracks, but uh, U P R R owns the tracks and the rail, and and any paving work has to be done by them. This work, uh, so we are currently in talks with U P R R for this work. And uh, this work requires three to four days of middlefield road closure between the railroad tracks, and it will involve traffic detour. We're trying to, you know, um, we're trying to coordinate with them so that there's minimal disturbance on middlefield roads, so we ask them to, if that this work can be done on a weekend. So ten to two dates right now are June twenty seventh to June thirty, which is a Friday to on Monday. Uh, we will coordinate with U P R R on our bill to also provide advanced public notification to the community, to residents, to everybody who is to make sure that everybody is aware of when this work is done. Thanks. Uh, with that, I want to share some uh, contact information. We do update our uh, website with uh, relevant information. So please check, check out middlefieldroad.org. And for any questions, you can also reach us by phone, and um, there's a separate project email. So you can uh, send us an email at G P W underscore middlefieldroadproject at S M C gov dot org. And you can also uh, reach us through the Community Affairs Office. So that brings us to the end of the presentation, and uh, I hope there's any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Are there any questions from council members? Uh, Rose?
Yeah, well, thank you for the presentation. Tell me a little bit about the licensing agreement with Sam Trans for the underground cable crossing. I don't understand what role Sam Trans.
So uh, this is the uh, this is the railroad line that goes at Middlefield National, so the railway there is owned by Sam Trans, so anything that goes underneath, um, they have the license agreement with Sam Trans.
I was confusing the Union Pacific with the Sam Trans, so that's the, that's the thing. Uh, Blair?
Um, yeah, I I remember when this happened two years ago. The county wanted to buy the spur that goes to the Dumbarton Railroad Crossing. And I think they did, and they did it through Sam Trans. It's not even an active railroad, it just goes to a burned-down bridge. I'm not even sure why Union Pacific is still involved, because it's had never been a train on that, that crossed at Middlefield, but I, whatever.
We still, we still have to work with them, unfortunately, because.
End of the day, this is an abandoned railroad, and uh, we we purchased the rest of it, including the burned-out bridge, for too much money, and we're gonna go ahead and take this to, you know, whatever. Uh, the railroad has plenty of money to buy.
Uh, Kathleen, first.
Couple of things, yeah, that what I call the train tracks to nowhere. We just, it was like, it's in the first effort. Definitely needs to get resolved somehow. Um, a couple of questions. And um, I know that the county has to understand what you guys call road settling. Like, we have to understand if we've done enough at Fourth Avenue, you know, with pedestrian crossing, things like that. I'm a little concerned about the new housing complex and this area that you're talking about. We don't know what's going to happen with traffic. I mean, we're hopeful that these are people that are going to walk to the local businesses and maybe the neighborhood, but that's rarely the case. Um, and so um, when we talk about waiting for roads settling to happen, we don't know the impact of that traffic and how quickly we're gonna be able to respond, because that is a scary place to turn and out. Even when no one's going in and out. Traffic backs up from Costco, traffic backs up on Middlefield Road. I think everyone just kind of sits at that intersection, go, okay, do I go now? Make a left or make a right. So I'm curious about how we're gonna understand the impact of the traffic. Um, you know, it's gonna open in phases, so I mean, you won't know initially, but when that is fully built and settled, I think we we don't know what's coming down the pike when it comes to that area, so a little bit curious of that. Um, there are still some challenges on um, stop signs at those two areas. I'm very familiar with Conso Coffee and that stop sign in front of Sean's Business, and then the stop sign like, I don't know how many feet later, and then the light and what's the settlement of all of that, then adding in the junction. So I am curious, and I I think we don't know what we don't know yet, but um, I think it still remains an issue, those two stop signs, and I know it's something that, you know, Conso Coffee cares deeply about because he's seen so many close calls there. Um, have we figured out who is responsible, totally different question, for maintaining the sidewalks cleanliness and then also watering the trees that have been planted? Is that on a regular schedule now? Are we relying on businesses? Or, because I know at one time the county wasn't sure who was going to pay for those services, and so I'm curious where we're at with that. Or, because I know at one time the county wasn't sure who was going to pay for those services, and so I'm curious where we're at with that. Yeah, I don't envy or have to work with, because as Blair said, it's a train tracks to nowhere and we need to do something. Yeah, I'm curious about maintaining the trees and sidewalk.
So for maintaining the tree and sidewalk, we currently have a contract with Land Speed Company, okay, so we've been six months, seven weeks studying the contract. So that's, that's.
Also has that, it will have um. We've got irrigation systems at all the tree walls and at the water system, it's a part of that. So the trees and the green infrastructure are on the timer and uh there's water.
Okay.
Uh Christian, I stand up first, thank you.
Uh thank you for your presentation. Uh thank you to the council for bringing this up again because I think it's been. Since like two or three months ago when the Knights family came on, so it looks great. Uh I love biking there now. Um usually I'll bike on the sidewalk and now I feel really comfortable. Using those bike lanes. Um I guess, I just had a comment in regard to that. The work on the railroad or the crossing. Uh for me, like my bike has really thin wheels and so just biking through them really hard. Um so I guess uh if that ti- June timeline doesn't work out, um. Uh but what would be like the latest that should be done?
Both uh county and U P R R want to get this done soon. They typically have an interesting schedule where they come Tuesday to Tuesday and then. So I guess it's two fingers and one that we try to follow. Thanks, I'll give you the schedule for that. We want to get it done this summer.
Don't call us to it, but I think it's gonna be done this summer. It's not that it's a queue, we're looking for the dates, so that's like July. Uh or August based on our schedule.
Thank you, and um also on the hurling lane and the section that um I. I, I've been waiting for it to, to turn on because I've crossed through there so many times. And I've had a lot of near misses because people do the California stuff and they're not gonna stop and braid. Um so I'm just looking forward to that and also. Um so this whole project, I think it started when I was still in high school, like in the twenty teens. And now, I don't know when to bring up the conversation again about leaving the install. Parking meters? I don't know if that was a conversation back in twenty ten, but I've been totally, you know, talking with business owners. They're having issues with, you know, the, the car repair shops, you know, using that parking. And because there are no parking meters, you know, there, those car, those parking spots are not available for their business. So it's just an idea, it's, it's. So when can we bring that up with you?
So for, for the parking meters, I know that's before the pass, uh I believe that's something. Or the public works, the public is aware, um but at this point, if they revisite that the traffic pattern settle in. Once we get the signals um installed, and then I think we do have a couple of limited term parking right now. Meter, I think that's, if you're studying, please be done first.
So how long do you need the parking to set, how long do you need the traffic to set?
Well, um we, we still have to install it through the, the signals, as Monica mentioned, that we are. The uh, we do have a specific railroad uh signals and that will be interconnected to our traffic signals. That's at the uh Pacific Health Clinic in the Robicane area. All that, all the skills are gonna talk to each other. And that's when it's turned on and then traffic happens. If it's time to settle in. We'll show um how the traffic flow will, will go.
And so once the signal is turned on, all the stop signs.
If there are other comments, that leads me to my, to my, oh Blair, sorry, you had to hand it.
Um I thought there were a few things I just wanted to mention as a company, you have to respond. Um on bikes, there, there's a great bike infrastructure in Redwood City, so you get to Woodside Road. And there's beautiful county infrastructure, starting in the train tracks south. But there's a gap where it's incredibly dangerous and someone's gonna get killed and you have to ride on the sidewalk. Otherwise you will be killed. Um this happens a lot up and down the peninsula where. It looks great, like on paper you draw like a continuous line, like this is a bike roll park, but. The reality is, it's, everyone's going to Costco gas and there's no shoulder there. You're, you're gonna get smushed on a bike, it's incredibly dangerous and we've actually made it. You know, people feel comfortable biking, but then it's super, super dangerous for like three blocks. Um we need to fix that and it's between Redwood City and us. And both of us need to do more and reach out because everyone's gonna say it's in your jurisdiction or your jurisdiction. It doesn't matter, lives are at stake, so that needs to be fixed. And then the second comment is. Um we need more parking, probably like a second county lot. Um and I like the idea of like the businesses circulating because we could just say it's a two hour spot, you know. We don't have to put meters, it's just, it's two hour spot, county deputies can go by and chop the cars and if they haven't moved. You know, um and I had a third thing, but I'll think of it later. Thank you very much.
My, my comments are, when the, you just said when the stoplights go on, that the stop signs will be removed, right? Is that also when the utility poles will be removed? Is that in the same stage or is that two different stages?
Same, because utility poles, uh you know, it depends on when maybe it's on, underground there, um for. So once that is done, then they can move. But yeah, yeah.
Uh has the county kind of given them a deadline when to do it? Because I know this has been lingering up for a long time.
They, yeah, I do this.
We bring in discussions with all the utilities, um so we have.
A lot of things also become P G N, so they do become.
Okay, they're in the top of the food chain. Okay, if there are other comments, councilman, thank you so much, guys, really appreciate it. Hope to see you guys soon with more, more, more news, more good news. All right, we'll uh move on to agenda item six. This agenda items. Okay, yeah, okay, so as I was saying, it is a uh agenda item six, it is a motion. Uh we do need an action item, but we do have a presentation on here and we need to take an action item on this, so. Welcome in.
Uh good, uh good evening, uh council members. Uh my name is Jonathan Bruns, I'm a planner with the. San Mateo County Planning Department, and I'm here to give a presentation on a uh lot line, or a lot split. Uh project uh at five four three Encina Avenue. Uh it's under case number P L N twenty twenty four. Zero zero two six nine. Uh this is to, for the consideration of a minor. Uh subdivision, splitting one lot into two, of a parcel that is currently twenty thousand one hundred twenty point nine four. Square feet uh into two lots of just a hair over ten thousand square foot each. Um and the existing parcel is developed with a single family residence. That is opposed to be demolished as part of the overall intention. Next slide please. Uh so as I uh just said, you know, we're uh proposing a standard minor subdivision, uh taking one lot into two. Uh this is not an S B, our Senate Bill nine project. Uh as part of this uh split, there is no development proposed at the time, simply that. The residence in order to be uh, uh has to be demolished in order for the final subdivided map to be recorded. So before uh final approval, planning department needs to get part of the house that's currently there. Uh this is a overview map of uh the area, so. I, I know it's maybe hard for y'all and for folks that uh all want to see, but the yellow is the uh current property. Uh spacing at Cina Avenue, this particular apartment, Cina Avenue is a dead end street. Uh it doesn't go all the way through, uh and as you can see, the uh property is surrounded by developed property, so. Uh this is a screenshot of the existing property from Google Maps, just showing what's there right now. It's a one story, single family house. For standard issues, so. Uh okay, I apologize that this is kind of uh difficult to see. On the left hand slide is a rendering of what's existing right there. Where the entire parcel and the existing house, the existing house is kind of foretailing on to the uh left hand side. On the right hand picture is a proposal of basically splitting the lot down the middle. Like I said, this is a the twenty thousand square foot lot and each proposed lot is just a hair over ten thousand. Uh with all the setbacks and such in there. Excellent. Uh so this project conforms with both the general plan, the county general plan and the North Berks Community Council Plan, our North Berks. Community plan. Uh so it complies with the North Berks Community Plan. Uh this area has a uh listed density of fifteen to twenty four dwelling units per acre. Uh for the single family residential zone, this development here will be uh quite a bit under that. Uh the current zoning designation for this property is S ninety-three. It meets all of the S ninety-three development standards with a minimum of ten, ten thousand square feet of also. Uh it, and because of that, and it would uh be able to meet all the setbacks, there is a. Ability for future development that would uh comply with all uh zoning regulations. Uh so it is, it is recommended that the council provide a recommendation to the director of planning and building to approve. This uh modest subdivision, uh allowing for the existing twenty thousand one hundred twenty square foot also. Be split into two parcels of ten thousand fifty-nine square foot and ten thousand sixty-one square foot, slightly, little bit of change here and there. Excellent. And that is it. Do y'all have any uh questions? I'll have to take it.
Thank you for your presentation. Uh council members, are there any questions, comments? Kathleen?
Yes, my question would be, um clearly, not gonna do so much, I got a quick knock, maybe somebody put two houses on there and that's. That's where my head goes, like, okay, so then the neighbors, but is it possible to then put two. Giant houses on that, on that piece of land, on the two pieces of land?
Uh I mean, it's possible to, you know, have. Two new houses that off the bat maximize uh or build out the available. Lot, so the S ninety-three has a thirty percent uh lot coverage allowance, so. Three thousand square foot of lot coverage, uh but that includes a lot of things, that's not just the house, it's also anything that's eighteen inches. Or greater above uh the grade directly below it. Uh floor area ratio in, in this area is not a set number, it's a slight equation. Uh I roughly gamed it out to about thirty-nine hundred square foot. Of lower area ratio, so that includes, you know, your first floor, second floor and whatnot, but that's not. Like an exact thing, someone has to do that exactly, or those things will come more into. Prominence when someone decides to come back and submit for the building, but I guess it kind of depends on what. Folks think of oversized house would be uh for this area. I, I don't happen to live in this area, so I don't, I don't.
They'll come back to us at some point with that question.
Uh Blair? If the owner moves out, they tear down the house, they have two parcels. But the financing falls there and they can't do the development or move it. Could they stick a couple mobile homes there or park some trailers and start bringing out for cash, rent? Uh under the table or do any of that kind of stuff?
No, uh this isn't our one uh single family residential zone. Uh my understanding has been that we don't, the planning department would not approve of someone putting in like a Paul B or Paul, Paul them. Uh any length of top and then renting it out. Uh you build there, it's gotta have, you know, full on building for your connections and all, all the good stuff that comes with it.
I'm the owner.
Okay.
Can you use the mic to?
I'll stick it. We're trying to develop the project to move in, uh certainly, and it's hoping that's what they want us.
It's hard to hear, but I, I'm satisfied, I didn't have to call anything shady. Uh I still got other, uh are there any other council members? Uh I have a, a question. Uh on the proposed, it's very, like you said, it's very hard to see. But on the proposed lots, it's being split down the middle, what, what would be the, the frontage feet of each lot?
Uh I believe the district requirement is fifty and the proposal is fifty-one.
Okay, so they do meet that, that, that fifty feet requirement, because it's fifty-one, okay?
Yeah, uh which would be doubled down when they come back to uh. Uh redeveloped, built and farming, or D W's gonna look at me, cutting to make the drop ways and that good stuff, right out of the.
Okay, so they do meet that fifty, okay, that, that was my question. Uh any members, any other comments or questions? Okay, if there are not, uh Blair?
I know, I recommend.
I, I second that motion. Need a roll call or? Uh all of favorites, say I. That's so, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for responding.
All right, uh this item was our last item, we are now doing uh report outs. Uh District Four, we have a representative.
I think it's Connie online. Connie, do you have anything to report out, for District Four?
Hi, yes, can you guys hear me? Can you hear me? Hello?
Connie, we can't hear you.
Oh no. Can you hear me? Hi, can you guys hear me? Hello? Can you hear me?
Okay, we'll see if we can get that. Um. We'll start with um, uh council member report out. Um George is not here. Uh Bruce, do you have anything to report out this month?
Hello?
Briefly, um for those of you who haven't heard, I was named the District Four rep for the San Mateo County Parks Recreation Commission. Looking forward to going to work on that. Been looking forward to going to work on that. So. Or very similar to ours, provides recommendations to the Board of Supervisors for all county owned parks. Um, I've been to a few meetings. There's really great engagement from park management, so I'm really excited to get to work on that. Second thing is I wanted to give a shout out to Marcy Dreagan, who I understand is retiring. Marcy, as you know, has served as. Chief of Staff, Supervisors, Goshay. Tom Newing and uh Warren Slocom, she's retiring. I have fifteen years of service to them, so just wanted to wish her well on this. That's it.
Thank you so much. Uh, Blair, anything to report out this month?
Um. I really like the new supervisory newsletters and the staff invite me to like tons of events and. I've made it to like two things, but um I get tired just watching her Instagram feed. But she has way more envy than I would have her stage and such, but um I'm impressed. With the level of engagement from her and her staff. Um, I disagree with a couple of things that she said about like. Not my riding on the sidewalk, I think she said at the last meeting. Um, but I didn't want to say anything at the time because that was being recorded and people were giving their first impression of the new supervisor. It's all right to like disagree with your representative. We don't work for the supervisor. Um, the supervisor doesn't work for us. He's independently elected. We're kind of appointed, we're advisory, we're all just sharing in the. Process of trying to make better policy and, you know, it's whatever. So I was rambling on, check in, check in.
Hey, uh, Kathleen? Anything to report up? Christian, anything you'd like to share with us or the public?
Uh, yeah, first of all, thank you for the welcome. Uh, it's been a great meeting. I mean, talking about. Metalfield, the improvement projects is the great. Breakers meeting. I just, I want to learn more about that. Um, also about the new legal services that businesses have. I think it's very important. I come from like a union background, so that workers' rights is very important to me. Um, I did want to, I guess, address the what you went on in the last month. Um, unfortunately, a biker died um over by Atherton near Encino Elementary. Um, I can fight through there for like up to go to Mount Park to donate blood or probably alter the my own thoughts is so. I fight there so many times. I think there's another like couple blocks from down there in Metalfield that someone else died a couple of years ago too. So every time we affected, I just have that in mind. It goes slow. I always have my, you know, my. Really bright yellow vest and helmet, so. And then also a pedestrian got hit on in the southern border of North Berks and Redwood City. Yeah, or I think it was on Cinco de Mayo, Neta. Um, she was crossing the the road in front of near top of a. And I don't know if you have the scene of the video online. It's very graphic. I saw like the dash cam one. And yeah, that's something that kind of mean on you, you know, don't be more active, this is, you know. Cyclist safety, pedestrian safety, unfortunately, you know. But I mean, I know that's, you know, like in Caltrans and that's like a whole issue in itself, but. Uh, Mike Brooks is saying, or. Blair, um, said, you know, I'm gonna continue biking on this network because, you know, I value my life. The sheriff's office or the Rose City Police Department can stalk me all they want, but, you know, I value my life. And until these roads are safe enough, you know, I'm I'm gonna do what protecting myself, but. Um, other than that, I I guess I'll have to learn, you know, how to bring in agenda items. Because there are a lot of things that I want to talk about, like the S A C reported that. Um, uh, this, you know, whether the. How how many people are reporting, you know, what's the timeline on recording? Um, another item I'm interested in is the block safety cameras that are being installed. I've noticed like two or three around my area, so maybe we can get a map of where they're being located. I just made a search online and there's like a hundred cameras and they've already, in the last thirty days, they read a a million license plates. So that's definitely really good. That'd be the first to have. Um, and just like a personal thing, um, I was able to attend the Looking Back, Moving Forward event at the Redwood City Library Downtown. And they were talking about juvenile justice and one of the. Things that came up that stood out for me was that uh Redwood City has one of the highest used incarceration rates. Um, and I think one of the main reasons is, yes, Redwood City has a great downtown, but here on Redwood, you know, what is our downtown? Is it Metalfield Road between between first and fifth? So having the center for creativity here earlier, um, his idea of having a permanent spot up here. Really does miss part of every idea that. Except how we can advocate for that. That's only one of the things.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Mr. Chair, can we go back to um Connie?
Yes, it's fine. Right now. Okay.
Hi, can you guys hear me now?
Yours?
I can hear you. Oh, no.
You cannot hear me. Yes, yeah. Connie, we can hear you.
You can hear me? Hello? Nope.
Yes, you can hear me.
You can hear me? You can?
Yes.
Sorry. Awesome. Sorry, guys. Uh, apologies for not being in person. Um. Uh, some report outs for you tonight, and I think you, some of the members um. Mentioned it, but uh our newsletter is out for May. Uh, please subscribe to it. It'll help you keep up with some of the things that we are working on. Um, thank you for the comment on our social media. Our supervisor is very, very busy. She loves to be in community and so we love to show that. Um, we also wanted to let you guys know in case you didn't, haven't known, but if you've read our newsletter, you will know that uh Marcy, our Chief of Staff, is retiring June third. Um, we had um an opening, we had like her job posted out um there and we had some applicants that just recently closed this week. And so we'll be interviewing candidates for um the new Chief of Staff role. Um, the uh the one other thing that I have to report out today, this morning, uh, the board. Um, held a special meeting. The special meeting was about um a. About a investigation uh that the sheriff um had brought to uh. Uh, then President of the Board, Warren Silcom, about um some allegations against Mike. And so the board voted today to share that report with the um public and so that's not live on our county website. Um, they also voted to then, you know, close this case. Uh, the report essentially states that there was no merit. With the claims that the sheriff made against our county executive. Um, and so I just wanted to let you guys know that that report is out. Um, it's also going to be translated in other languages so that the community could um read that, but that's all I have to report out for today. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, I I did want to report out, um. Uh, I know Christian touched on this, uh, the tragic accident happened last one, last Wednesday, seven forty A M. Um, uh, Dylan Taylor, a local teacher from Lefrada Middle School. At Mellow Park, but he was a high school football coach at Mellow Agribusiness. So tremendous loss to the community, so uh didn't want to. Mention that as as we continue to try to provide safer transportation uh for for bikes, pedestrians, obviously it's ongoing. Uh, challenge with that. I did want to mention that. And also Brooks, uh tremendous honor to have you represent, represent District Four. You definitely bring a lot to the table, a lot of experience. You've done done so much with the. Uh, parts of the streets and everything, understand it well. So thank you for representing us. That's awesome to do. Yeah, very proud of that. Um, and of course, you know, Marcy, her many, many years in the county in different capacities. Um, so thank her for her many years of service to to the county as a whole. Um, as she represented, you know, different departments and different supervisors. Um, also, I want to touch up on something very important. Um. We didn't uh adjust or make adjustments to our study sessions. Uh, normally we used to have like every other month. And so now we're only having three a year, so I want to. Remind that council members, if we can make an effort to try to attend them, um, last one that we had. Uh, we did not have a forum, so we did not put in officially have a meeting, even though we stayed to discuss the matter. So if we could, uh, please make an effort. Our meetings are January for study session, January, uh, May and September. So we, our next one or the last one coming up for the years in September. So if we could make it, uh, that would be awesome. And whenever you can, if you can notify county staff, because we also have that issue about knowing. If who was coming, who was not, so please add courtesy to the rest of us. If you just notify county cap uh county staff on that, that would be. Awesome on that. And also, um, just to point out the importance of making it to the meeting, and if we can't, which things come up, it's understandable. Just notify county staff or the rest of us so we can have our meetings start on time and we can at least meet a form minimum required on that. Um, and that is all that I have to uh report out. If there are another other comments, uh, we will close the meeting. You can have a motion to adjourn?
Over.